Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 PM, so I will call the Tuesday, November 18th meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, interior republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ladeen.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Vice President Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Vice President Herrick.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
And President Graski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item 3.1 is a presentation by Chief Cameron Volbrecht on the design and cost estimates of the new fire hall.
So Chief is making his way up, councilors. Some of you, especially my fellow plan commissioners, will start to get a little exhausted with fire hall presentations, but they're not going to end anytime soon. This is our first building we will have constructed in quite a while, and I am trying to keep you all a part of the process of designing and improving it. There are a lot of little decisions that have to be made along the way, and while I am happy to make those on your behalf, this should really be a collaborative effort. So Chief Volbrecht.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Glad to be in front of you again tonight, and so I know what you saw in your packet is going to look really similar to what we've seen before, but now instead of having just a bubble diagram, we started adding doors, windows, and a lot of our design features into it. So tonight I'll have Ann Porter with LHB kind of walk through the design on it, and then I have Max Ferg at from Crowe's Anderson who will walk through our costing estimates. We've been able to get our second costing estimate, so we're kind of getting that pencil sharpened down into exactly what this building is going to cost based on the design features. And we still have some options to talk about, and once we're done with that, I'll kind of go through them, especially when we're looking at the heating and cooling systems of the building. Ann?
Thank you. Was the other presentation available to switch to? Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Ann Porter with LHB, so I've been enjoying the process of participating in the design on the project management side, working with Wendell, Five Bugles, and LHB. We're currently in the design development phase, so we're, you're actually seeing the approval of the schematic design. Based on the timing of the design process, Crowe's Anderson does need weeks to prepare the cost estimate in relation to our design deadlines. So we're still slowly progressing and keeping the momentum so that we can keep up with the final bid document schedule of February. So the planning commission did review the drawings, which you'll hear about later, I'm sure, today, but you can see here the site plan, which you all, I believe, have in your packet. We have had several meetings. We had a preliminary permit meeting with the planning department, and we did review the site layout. We made some slight variations from the original design. You can see it actually has an L-shaped parking lot. We also have some area for trash dumpster, training pad area, and community parking, also some diagonal parking on the site on John Avenue as well. The next is the overall floor plan. You can see, and this is actually rotated, so north is to the left, the apparatus bay. The fire trucks will actually enter from the north side of the building and then exit out onto Seventh Street. So we're really, you can see here, and this is, I apologize, a very small scale, but we're really getting a lot of detail. We're going through a lot of design process meetings, specifically with the chief and all of the staff within this building, to get a lot of input on all of the equipment needs within the space, the mechanical, electrical requirements, and so we're making a lot of great progress. You can see here the second story, there is a mezzanine training level. This has some electrical, mechanical equipment, and then a lot of area for training and storage as well. The next slide, you can see some elevations of the building. Now, the building design really has not changed significantly, it's just been more refined from the initial presentation for pre-design. The planning commission approved the design concepts for the building. These are some 3D isometric views. You can see there's still a canopy, an entrance canopy on the north side, highlighting the main entrance for the community to the training rooms. You can see the overhead doors for the apparatus space, and the main front entrance, the second image on, from the top, is you can see the main entrance from Seventh. And then these are some 3D renderings that show some of the building aesthetics. We are still finalizing some of the overhead door styles, which will probably mimic more of what's on at headquarters. These show a lot more glass than we'll actually probably provide, but still have enough glass for daylight. There is brick masonry along the facade with some metal building panel on the two-story spaces. So these are the slides that highlight where we're at with the design. Any questions?
Questions about the design? The two things we'll talk about tonight again are design and costing. So Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, just a question about solar power?
Yes, so we do have, the roof is designed for structural load for solar panels to be applied to the roof. There is, they're having conversations on where are the right locations for those to be. Really, currently, we're planning for a third of the roof square footage to be allocated, and that's primarily over the apparatus bay. That's the ideal roof location, based on the slopes and the area of that roof, so yes.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Sweeney.
A couple of questions. I can't see if this is added in or taken out, but the geothermal, is that a goal?
It is currently an add beyond the, so Max will touch on that, and the chief will touch on that a little bit more. We're doing a lot of exploration to help explain the pros and cons and even the site limitations of that, so the chief was going to touch on that too as well. So the number currently does not include geothermal. There is an add alternate for that cost.
It's an add-on?
Yes.
And it's 450 grand, is that?
Correct. Yep, and really at this level, we would need to do some testing, well testing, to determine the number of wells that the site would require, and that requires cost as well, but there, the chief is actually going to touch on, we had a meeting this morning, on the limitations of the site and the type of building that this is for, if it's ideal for geothermal.
So we're clear, when we say an add-on, it's because at least I have put quite a bit of pressure on the design team to stay within that $10 million budget, and so anything that pushes beyond that, we consider an add-on. Now, you can take something else out and subtract to make room for it, but I certainly don't feel in a position yet to have a strong opinion on it until we answer some of the questions that Ms. Porter just brought up.
Okay. Just a couple more questions. Then the electric vehicle charging system is in the pricing, right?
Yes, that's correct.
The building will be, will have the infrastructure to support the charger. The charging system charger actually is coming with our fire truck. So it's already, it's included, it's not being paid for out of this project, we already have paid for it with the fire truck, but the infrastructure, the wiring, everything will be included as part of this building construction.
Okay. One more question. I could ask this later, but it's in here, so I'm going to ask it. And it says, it's a two-star, typical value management process can resolve up to 10% scope budget quite. Would you explain that? I'm more concerned about the total 10, is it total 10% of the project or 10% at a time?
Can we table that, and then we'll switch gears to budgeting?
All right, you may table that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions about design? Again, we will have another presentation right now about the budget and the costing. Questions about design, how it'll look, functionality? Okay, and I would point out the plan commission has also reviewed this and recommended the design that was just presented to you. So unless you have more, Ms. Porter, then we can move on to costing.
If you could hit your button one more time, please. No, I shouldn't. Okay, that sounds better. To introduce myself, I'm Max with Crowe's Anderson Construction. I'm the assigned project manager for your exciting fire station project, so likely to become a little bit of a familiar face for you here with updates throughout the process. So intent here is to update you on what the anticipated costs are for that beautiful design that Ann just shared. And so KA has gone through a pretty detailed process with the design team and the staff to put together the most accurate estimate that we can. Seems to be working. Okay, just like to hit the bottom line up at the very front to kind of take away any doubts or initial questions. Crowe's Anderson's professional opinion is this project appears to be very feasible considering the stated project budget and scope, so this is intended as a good news presentation, should be considered a positive situation. Okay, so just to provide some specific dollar amounts to that statement, so the total project budget, as we understand it, is $10 million. We typically split that between a couple categories of costs, which we refer to as the direct or hard costs. That would be the bulk of things such as the physical components or the subcontractor proposals associated with the project. And then that second bucket of money would be the indirect or soft costs. These are things that are required and associated with the project, but maybe aren't as, you know, don't have a tangible result, and so just a way that we sort through those different costs. But bottom line, $10 million total to cover everything associated with the project. After doing our schematic design estimate here, we're showing 9.45 million of those direct construction costs, and then we're showing 850,000 of those indirect owner costs. And so add those together, 10.3 million is our total project cost estimate. That is $300,000 above the stated project budget, which is a 3% misalignment in this case. Like I said before, we actually view that as good news at this stage of a project. It's very typical to see projects at schematic design that are well above that 3% mark, which is why we included this second little note at the bottom here that says it's very standard for a value management process to resolve up to a 10% misalignment, and you only have a 3% misalignment here. So really no doubt that there is a feasible way forward to achieve that alignment, and could even be within the margin of error of an estimate, right? This is not a proposal, this isn't the exact cost. We are making some assumptions and doing the absolute best we can, but there is some fluctuation potential there. We do also have included a 5% project contingency, which is slightly over $500,000 there, intended to mitigate the city's risk associated with any changing conditions through the final stages of design or the construction process. All right, try that again. Okay, so this slide here, a lot of details on the screen, not necessarily intended that you're able to read the specific dollar amounts or anything like that shown here. This is really just a couple examples of the level of detail that we've gone into with this cost estimate. Really, the message here is we did not simply look at the size of your building and say, oh, it's 20,000 square foot times X number per square foot, and here's a cost associated with that. This is a very detailed review where we've actually quantified every single material type and labor associated with installing that on the project, and then assigned costs to those materials and kind of spit out an overall project estimate. So very thorough process, a lot of different inputs to come out with this number that we're discussing here today. We did want to summarize some of the sustainability options. We preaddressed a few of these things already, but just to recap real quickly, the dollar amounts I described previously do include a $200,000 allowance for roof-mounted solar panels, so that's currently in the project. The electrical vehicle charging, as Chief stated, we've got the infrastructure costs included in the estimate value I shared, and then the actual charger has been purchased from a separate pot of money, from my understanding. And then the geothermal, Ann already covered that, but currently excluded from the project, and very high-level estimate, but roughly $450,000 if that was elected to move forward with, pending some of that more detailed information that LHB is working on. Okay, so just circling back to my statement that we are technically showing a $300,000 It's certainly possible that a competitive bidding scenario could resolve that misalignment all on its own, however, we don't want to just hope that that's the case and not have kind of a risk mitigation plan. So we have gone through and worked with the design team to identify a series of value engineering ideas. Those are shown here on the screen, I'm not going to run through each one of them, but bottom line is they total to $475,000, so we're actually able to close that gap and then some if we needed to. We're not necessarily accepting or rejecting these items at this time. We're able to kind of keep these in the back pocket and either accept them later on in design, once we do our next estimate, or even some of these make really good bidding alternates, so we can maintain those as an option all the way up to bidding day and even into construction. So just want to make sure that we clearly communicate, there is a path forward to get this within budget. We're showing it here, and we're going to just try to maintain maximum flexibility to ensure that we stay within that $10 million, but we also want to get you every single feature possible as part of this project. Okay, and then just real quick on schedule, the actual construction duration, we estimate at about 12 total months, so how we see that breaking out, as Ann alluded to earlier, LHB is intending to complete that design package in February of 2026, and then working through bidding and contracting in late winter, leading up to a construction commencement first thing in the spring, basically shooting for as early as weather allows, call it May 1st for conversation purposes, and then that gives us roughly that 12 months of construction. Typically, you've got about a month to get everyone moved in and familiar with the facility, letting that facility potentially open around that June 1st of 2027. Okay, that was everything I had on the cost and schedule information. Any questions?
First, councilors, I will add the pay close attention to that schedule and how this is going to work. Again, there's nothing on the agenda for you to decide tonight. That said, your, any conversation or feedback you have tonight or any day up until when we bring, up to and including when we bring the final proposal to you, feel free to add that input. One of, how this process works is the chief meets with me, presents this stuff to me, I give my feedback, and then usually the amended documents come to you for another presentation. You'll likely see this presentation again probably more than once before we get to that final bidding stage, and an atypical part of this process, usually when we're going to bid a project, we'll put the RFP out on our own and bring the winning bid back to council, and that's where you will decide to actually award a contract. We're going to bring you in earlier this time. What I'd like to do is as we go to bid, the request for proposals will come to you with all of those construction documents to make sure you're good with the final design, the final budget. Even from what you saw there, I'm going to be suggesting some tweaks. The budget has been 10 million. I am pretty committed to bringing you an estimate of 10 million. That means changes will have to be made to the design that you are seeing there. If you have suggestions, we would love to hear those in the next couple of minutes to weeks. That said, questions or suggestions? Counselor Graski.
With the current station, and maybe, if this doesn't apply to this conversation, by all means, you can answer it later, is there plans how to, is that just go for sale? Is it applied? Is it used by the city then, if it's owned, for something else in the future?
No immediate plans. My understanding, we'll leave it standing for a while. There's still quite a bit of functionality that can be used. At some point, it will become obsolete, unnecessary, and probably pretty ripe for development. That's the Hammond frontage, and so I think you'll notice the operational date of the new fire hall lines up pretty close with the closure date of the Blotnick Bridge. You probably get a few years of functionality out of the existing station, and then about the time that bridge reopens, I think we probably want to be in, have some vision for what we want to do. Chief, anything to add to that?
No, once we're out of the building, that is going to be up to you folks to decide what you want to do with it.
It's, like I said, it's got some functionality. The fire department can use it as a bonus garage, but not forever. Counselor Fennessy.
With all of this, this is the, just like the raw cost or the, like the construction costs, I assume there's going to be additional, you know, like finishing, you know, items as far as, because we're doing a lot of the upgrades to make it a safer environment for the firefighters, as far as the, you know, getting rid of the carcinogens before they go into the living space, all of that. I assume that comes at a cost and isn't factored into this, or is it?
The soft costs, we figured out and factored into here, which will include our furniture, dishwasher, washing machines, everything, that's all in the soft costs that are part of the proposal.
It is, okay.
Yep.
Perfect, thanks.
I'll take a second and talk about geothermal. I know that was one of our options in there, and it's a good thing to cover. For, I'm not an electrical or HVAC engineer, but from what I understand, geothermal relies on heat input and heat output, so in a sense of, in the winter, when you're heating your building, you're pulling heat out of the soil, and in the summer, when you're cooling your building, you're putting that heat back in. So it relies on a balanced approach for your heating and cooling through the year. The problem we have with the fire station is that, you know, half of the building and more than half of the heating costs come from the bays, in which we only heat the bays, we do not cool the bays. So what happens in the winter is we're pulling lots of heat out of there to heat their bays, especially when we're opening those big doors, and in the summer, we're not able to put that heat back into the soil, which can cause problems with geothermal. This is from what I understand from the engineers. So the option to have a geothermal for the whole building, it really is not feasible. There is an option for what we call a hybrid system, where the bays would be heated by a traditional boiler system, and then the living quarters, community room and stuff would be heated by a geothermal, our ground source heat pump. We're still looking at the feasibility of that. There is some issues when it comes to the Inflation Reduction Act, still has rebates for geothermal. However, the geothermal has to account for at least 50% of the heating in that structure to be eligible, and because of the bays are requiring well over 50% of the heating, that would probably make this project not meet the requirements for the IRA, that's from what I understand. So that would drastically affect the return on investment for geothermal. So we're still looking into what that time period would be for an ROI if we did a hybrid system. The other options are a traditional, either electric boiler or gas-fired boiler.
That's, that may be one of our bigger debates, councilors, and we will put that in front of you. You know, I got to tour the fire hall of the headquarters with the chief, bring, help the chief with a tour earlier today, and remember, we have two goals when it comes to our energy needs within a building like this. There's sustainability for sustainability's sake, trying to get off of fossil fuels, get off of any grid-based systems to provide energy to the building, and also cost savings. You know, now we've demonstrated the solar array at the headquarters, really did bring substantial cost savings and a relatively quick turnaround on the return on investment for that capital project. If that's not the case with something like geothermal, we don't necessarily set it aside, but it becomes a debate about whether the sustainability alone is worth it. Now, if it just doesn't work, if it's just not going to effectively do it, well, then we're not going to do it, of course, but you may find yourself in something of a debate about spending money for a policy goal rather than a financial one. Sorry, Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, so right now, are you looking at in-floor heating then? Is that the plan right now, or what type of heating throughout the building?
Yeah, it would be in-floor radiant heating boilers with makeup units that are fired by the boilers. Very similar to the design that's at headquarters right now.
Counselor Sweeney.
I realize that, and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong on these numbers, but medical calls are approximately 70% of the total calls. Am I close?
Yep, you're really close.
Okay. So is this building, I see big, three big doors, which I'm assuming is for full-fledged fire trucks.
Yep, would be for our fire trucks, rescue, and then the airboat would be positioned at the station two as well, our north end station. The small bay door that you're seeing, that's just a normal-sized door, that's where the ARV would be parked, so instead of bringing the ARV out, the big giant door would be coming out the smaller door.
Just a sidebar, I saw that on one, I saw the fourth door on the one side of the building, I didn't see it on the other, but that may, that may be me. So we're going to have three fire trucks and one medical, is that right?
We would likely have two fire trucks, the frontline engine, the reserve, and then the rescue boat, and then on the small bay, there's four doors in the front because the small bay is only halfway back. So they would back in, and they're backing in a pickup truck with good visibility and cameras.
That's why I saw three doors on the other end, okay. So how many, let's call it, for my lack of knowledge, ambulances or whatever, medical, how many of those are going to be located there?
Just the one ARV for now, because we only have one crew working up there currently with our staffing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the geothermal rebates that you mentioned, what, so if that's for a certain percentage of the building, how much would that cover? Does it cover a percentage of a percentage, or?
As far as the IRA rebates?
Yes.
I believe they work on, if I'm just going by memory, it's a 30%, and then there's some additional stuff depending on the qualifications of the city.
So it doesn't make sense to redesign this or give more living quarters to then capture that 30%?
No, no, the cost of square footage to add space to the, to make up, yeah, you'd have to add a lot of square footage to make up 50% of the heat that you're putting in that, to balance that out.
How close are we to that 50%?
I would have to look at it, but based on the site, I don't, there's enough room on the site. As you see right now, we're pretty tight in there, and that the only space that we had left there is probably going to be for runoff when we start dealing with our stormwater runoff control, so that space that's in the northeast portion of the site is going to be dedicated for that. So I don't think the site would support adding enough square footage to get that to the 50/50.
Thanks. I think you already answered this, the, for the EV charging, it's under the purchase of the EV vehicle, but the wiring infrastructure is there, is it, would it be in all the bays or just for one apparatus? Like if we want to expand to more later, is that?
So right now, it would be positioned between two of the bays. We'll have a small, what we call like a level-two charger, which we charge a pickup truck with, and then a level-three charger, which is the 480 volts, the supercharger, would be between the second and third bay, which would allow it to be charged on both sides, so you could have two different bays being charged from one charger. And the way that charger works, it's actually, it's on wheels and it pulls out, so it can move quite a ways.
So if we add more to the fleet, we're covered, basically?
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? And again, if you develop a passion for the fire hall design, just stay in touch. You can either meet with the chief, with myself, or possibly join our conversations on it. Thank you very much, Chief Volbrecht.
Thank you.
All right, item 3.2 is a public hearing to request comments on the city participation with the city.
All right. Item 3.2 is a public hearing to request comments on the city participation plan.
If there is no objection, I will open the public hearing. Seeing none, would anybody like to speak in the public hearing on the citizen participation plan? Would anybody like to speak on the citizen participation plan? Last call, would anybody like to speak on the citizen participation plan? And I'm not seeing a resolution here, so. Oh, it's at the end, okay. All right, we'll cover it at the end then. If there's no objection and no further comments, I will close the public hearing.
Item 4.1 is the approval of the November 4th, 2025 council meeting minutes.
Motion by Counsel Herrick, second by Counsel Elmer, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 6.1, report from Mayor Payne.
Okay, counselors, we're cruising to the end of the fiscal year, which means I have some promises to keep to you about finishing the budget book, which is all of our auxiliary budgets. You're going to start seeing those populate both the council agenda and committee agendas. I don't have a fixed rule about what goes to what, a little bit of tradition. If, a lot of these budgets go through the finance committee and where sometimes you're going to see ten, several budgets going to one committee meeting where they're either small, simple, little to no spending, small-dollar amounts is a lot of them. They'll breeze right through committee, possibly just come straight to council. Larger, very few large budgets will come directly to council, but I am going to most likely bring stormwater and wastewater directly to the next council meeting. They don't have a significant amount of change, but they have large capital budgets and large cash balances. And so if, if we were to make major changes to those or talk about significant policy changes like, say, rate increases, I think we should do that as a group. I don't anticipate those conversations, though. I think, they're very well-prepared. Next year is a fairly simple year for both of those budgets. There are some large projects, but we can entertain a couple of questions about what the next five years look like and then hopefully adopt those. The other important one I want you to look out for is the landfill. Lots to talk about at the landfill. Closure is coming, and I warned you about this last year. There are a lot of policy decisions that we need to make. Not just the big ones, like the rate increase or exactly when it will close, but the exact nature of how it's going to close and to what degree it will close and when that will happen. We've got to figure all of that out and we're going to hash most of that out in the, in the finance committee. Unless you all decide that belongs somewhere else, like lengthy committee of the whole. Finance committee is what has handled the landfill for a very long time, so I'm going to send it there. But if you are, I would, I would at least pay close attention, watch those discussions if you cannot actually attend. And if you have significant questions, feel free to meet again with me or Director Janago. Unless there are any questions I can answer right now, we can move on to the committee business.
Item 7.2 is the business of the Public Works Committee with a meeting held on November 6th. Is there a report from the chair?
Thank you, Mayor Payne, members of the council. We had a great Public Works Committee meeting, talked about a lot of different things. We've had an ongoing conversation about traffic issues in our neighborhood, concerns about speeding and related things like that. So we had some of the members of the public there to talk with us more about their ideas and thoughts and concerns. And we will be talking more about that, I'm sure, at our next meeting. So certainly would welcome any of the council members to join us in those conversations about how we can make sure our streets are safe for all the users. We have a few different recommendations here. We talked about some code changes. The first one is about just adding some language regarding campsites in order to meet state standards. The second one's about utility, sewage usage, and how we define things with fats, oils, and grease. We talked about a contract with Holy Buckets for cleaning our municipal services building and city vault toilets. We talked about approving the consent to collateral assignment of land lease for the hangar site. This is basically a transfer, kind of a, a name wording transfer for an existing lease that's already at the airport. And we talked about approving the purchase of some trucks for the city staff. So I guess I'll send it back to the city clerk to read the first item.
The first one is to approve an ordinance admitting city code chapter 34, construction code article one, general section 34.6, construction standards codes adopted. To add item F, state camping codes adopted shall be set as forth below item F as required by the state for renewal of the City of Superior Building Inspection Division Uniform Dwelling Code Jurisdiction Delegation.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Counsel Moffett, second by Counsel Elmer, is their discussion. Counsel Grasky.
Is this more of cleaning up this ordinance a little bit and bringing it up to date? Or are we looking to develop more camping in the city? Or is it, I mean, I'm just, for my own clarification.
Counsel Moffett, are you able to answer?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, my understanding is just a language cleanup in order to meet state standards and that we don't really have campsites like this in the city except for next to Namaeji, the city owns that trailer park site. And it's not currently being used in that way, but that would potentially apply to that site. But that's really the only site that it applies to, but it's really just kind of a language cleanup thing to meet state standards.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Next is an ordinance admitting city code chapter 112, utilities article two, sewer usage in relation to the definitions and fats, oils, and grease.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Counsel Moffett, second by Counsel Elmer, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Third is to approve the contract with Holy Buckets Incorporated for cleaning of the municipal services building and city vault toilets through December 31st, 2026.
Motion by Counsel Moffett, second by Counsel Elmer, is their discussion. Usually this council cannot keep it together with a silly name, but good, good job, everybody. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Four is to approve the consent to collateral assignment of land lease for the hangar site at 1419 North 46th Street with Produce Services LLC and Minnesota Power Employees Credit Union at the Richard I. Bong Memorial Airport.
Motion by Counsel Moffett, second by Counsel Elmer, is their discussion. Counsel Herrick.
Yes, I'd just like to get a legal perspective on exactly what this means. And I guess I've never heard this before, you know, going on at the airport. So I just wanted to get some more information as far as what, what this entails.
I'll ask Director Janago to give some background. He's there to go to on the airport.
Sorry, took me a minute to get up here. We've done a bunch of these, but what it is, is somebody has a land lease, they make an improvement to that land, and a bank typically has an interest in that improvement on the property. Because of the land lease, the bank has to have a collateral lease assignment so they could take over the property and they could, they could lease that property if something were to happen financially where they were to take that, that, that improvement over. So it's, it's, it just, if, my understanding is it allows the bank to take over that property if there's a problem with the improvements on that. That's why the lien is for Minnesota Power Employees Credit Union.
Okay, so when you say property, the physical building and not the actual land it's sitting on, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It'll still be under a lease, but it'll be the bank.
And the bank would, would just adopt the exact same terms for the lease?
Correct. They'd take over the lease.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the agreement, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item five is to approve the purchase of two 2025 Toyota RAV4 SE plug-in hybrids at a cost of $48,363 per unit and three 2025 Toyota RAV4 LE hybrids at the cost of $35,240 per unit from Kari Toyota through the Toyota Fleet program.
Motion by Counsel Moffett, second by Counsel Elmer, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
7.3, business of the finance committee with a meeting held on November 4th. Is there a report from Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, thank you. This will require no action. We're working through a land lease with the Billings Park Civic Center. We haven't quite completed it yet, but we should next month. So just for your information, we need no action. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
I just wanted to mention, thank you. The meeting minutes said it was in September and I just wanted to reflect that, that would be updated going forward, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to item 8.1.1 is the business of the Plan Commission. They had a meeting on November 12th. Is there a report from the chair?
Yes, counselors, we, only one item of business, vacation from an unimproved, for an unimproved alley. This is not an actual right-of-way that anybody uses. The, what took up most of our time at the Plan Commission was further discussion on changes to the Small Business Grant Program. I think we're going to finally see some proposed changes. Nothing terribly dramatic. Those will come to the next Plan Commission meeting, though we'll be looking at all of it. So while the, what's going to show up on the agenda won't look very dramatic, there's always the possibility that we make dramatic changes, though I don't think so. It was a fairly, fairly open discussion. I think we have a good understanding of the direction we're going to go, which is incremental changes to make better use of the fund balance that we're building up. The other thing we talked, we had a lengthy presentation discussion about the design of the fire hall. The design of any public building goes through the Plan Commission. We talked about the potential name of the fire hall, whether it should stay Station Two or become North End Fire Hall. You'll notice I artfully dodged that when we were talking about the fire hall earlier because it became a whole big thing, made the newspaper and everything. So it's not as dramatic as it sounds, just a little bit of fun with the fire hall. And if we need to have a discussion about it, we can. But more importantly, at the next Plan Commission meeting, we're going to be back to talking about zoning. So if, if the zoning code rewrite is of interest to you, consider joining that meeting. Otherwise, I will ask the clerk to read the recommendation.
It's a recommendation to approve a resolution to set a public hearing for discussion on the vacation of unimproved alley running east-west located at south of North 58th Street abutting Cedar Avenue.
The motion is by Counsel Dean, second by Counsel Moffett, is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.2 is reports without recommendations. At this time, are there any further committee or commission reports to be made?
Seeing none, we can proceed to old business.
Item 9.1 is a report on food insecurity grant program.
Okay, counselors, this is the item, as part of the resolution at the last meeting, awarding funds for food insecurity grant program. You included an obligation for me to report back on this. So that is included in the packet. Well, there's a memo about how we spent the $25,000 that was awarded immediately, as well as two potential grants for you to consider tonight. Basically, what happened in the last two weeks is I called together members of what is called the Anti-Poverty Coalition. And I think one of the emails actually describes many of those organizations. It's just nonprofits and faith-based organizations that, that work to serve people experiencing poverty in many different ways. I explained, I rehashed a lot of the conversation we had and said, and asked what would be the best way to spend that $25,000? And how best should we dispose of the remaining $175,000? So these are not just my recommendations, we developed them as a team. And so what the group decided, first for the $25,000, and I know you've read the memo, I'm saying this as much for the public as anybody else. Faith United Methodist, the Faith Food Shelf is one of our largest nonprofit food suppliers in the city. They had their food shelf completely cleaned out in, in the week leading up to you awarding that grant money. So we all agreed we should replenish that just to get them ready for today. They're dispersing food every Tuesday. By the way, I recommend you stop by on a Tuesday and watch that operation. So $9,000 went to fill, refill that food shelf. The other $16,000, we put in the hands of Northwest Community Action led by Millie Roundsville to go out and basically do a large food buy. And then the group trusted her to distribute that food to many other food shelves throughout the community. You see all, so that I would have some accountability to you, I asked both, both of them to submit emails just describing how they'd use the money and formally requesting it. They also then filled out the grant application, which you can see in the packet. But I also included the invoice that Northwest, the food they actually bought. And I want to call your attention to that. Dig that out of the packet because as you're talking to your constituents, we're going into the holiday season and folks are going to be feeling generous. People are going to be contributing to food shelves. And I was really, really impressed by that list. That's, that's just the perfect list of exactly what kind of non-perishable food you should be buying to supply a food shelf. If you wanted to put together a little packet of food to bring to a food shelf, that, that is just a great shopping list. So that was the $25,000. The two grants you see do not use up the rest of the money. That is by design. You see first, $75,000 is for another similar large buy for Northwest community service for Millie Roundsville to go out and do another large buy to distribute to food shelves throughout the holiday season, as well as a re-expansion of what I am used to referring to as a commodities program for senior citizens out of the senior center. They put together boxes that once a month, senior citizens can pick up food that can supply them for the better part of a month. It's nor near sufficient, but it really does help a lot of senior citizens. Many have been dropped off of that program. This money will help put them back on at least for the next two months. The other grant you see is again for Faith United Methodist Church. And while that will do some food shelf supplementation, it's also to expand their delivery program. Many people can't physically get to food shelves. Faith United is actually delivering that food to them. And they, they specifically asked, and the group agreed, that it would be wise to supplement them so that they can do more, spend more money in gas, have more coolers, have more volunteers out doing this work. This is all described in the applications. And then what remains, at the time, we talked about a potential large need for infant formula in December. Don't know that that need will be there or not. If it is, expect another grant application to use up the rest of the money. But I do expect to meet with the Anti-Poverty Coalition again, really parts of them I'll meet with tomorrow. And we'll continue discussing the best ways to use the rest of this money if we're going to use it at all. That was a long report, but I, I think this is a lot of work. My recommendations to you are to approve the two grants, but first I will see if there are any questions about my report. Counsel Herrick.
Yeah, where are we at? I mean, as far as, you know, you guys getting together and now that the shutdown is over, where are we at as far as distribution of any types of funding or foods? Are we going to be able to, are they going to be able to go back and get funds that they didn't receive? Plus continue funds in the future, or how's that going to work?
That's, that's very difficult for me to answer. You know, a lot has happened in even the last couple of days. And I mean, I'm trying to follow the news as rapidly as I can. The, the federal government has reopened and food benefits have been restored. But as we talked about two weeks ago, even as we were passing this, the food benefits had not expired at that point and, right? Or pretty close to it. There was a lot of uncertainty and that's what really, it was the uncertainty that depleted the food shelves. So the need was still there. The need is likely to persist, but if everything kind of stabilizes and things are looking okay, the group, I think, did agree, and I'll continue to suggest, giving this money back doesn't mean it disappears forever. If we, if we give it back to the Economic Development Fund and a new need appears, I think building this relationship between the Anti-Poverty Coalition and the council has value as we go into the next year as well. So we'll just keep watching and deploying as the need actually exists.
So do we know right now if any of these benefits that they receive, if they received them yet, or are they still waiting for them?
My understanding is that they've all been restored and folks have received benefits.
All right. Thank you.
Further questions on the report? Counsel Grasky.
Just a slight question here. As we start to talk about this and keep up on it and create these relationships, and I think the attention that's coming forth to the city, are we creating any resources for just our community to, like where they can reach out if they want to volunteer? Or as you said earlier about, you know, the magic comes over us at this time of year to donate? Are we helping supply that connection as well? I know that's some extra ask, probably from specific offices, but, or I don't know if there's just a way that we can connect the dots there a little bit, just because this is such a great positive movement for our community. So maybe more of a suggestion from what I'm saying right now, but just a thought.
Yeah, the answer is no, at least from the city perspective. We have not given out that information. But I do agree that that need is there. It's something we've been talking about. One, I, I- One, I, I like meeting with the Anti-Poverty Coalition because they're experts. They, they really do this work on a ground level. But when you see a lot of what happened over the last month, where the whole community wants to participate, that's a lot of people that are not experts. And, uh, regardless of the size of their hearts or wallets, that, uh, they're not necessarily helping in the most effective and efficient way. So I think some public education, uh, should be part of our effort going forward, and the city can absolutely help with that. We do have resources. We have a website, we all have social media pages, and if we can create a consistent message, I think that could be some good work from the team. At the very least, part of the reason you see me calling out that shopping list, that's a useful tool. You should pull that out and use that if you're having conversations about what to buy. If you wanna go buy food, use that list and just drop it off wherever.
Yeah, thank you, and I think even just having the discussion on infant formula is huge. It's a very missed, um, conversation sometimes, or, you know, it, it, it's just an expensive need, and I think that this is just, warms my heart to see that part in this, um, report, so thank you for that.
Okay, further questions on the report before I read the first grant, uh, Counselor Sweeney?
At the last meeting, we talked about, um, at least my recollection is that we were going to set some guide rails, um, for this amount of money. Have we done that through that coalition? Is that what I hear you say to me?
Well, uh, what the coalition really did was make a plan, and, uh, these grants largely fit that plan. So that was an hour-long meeting, uh, that, that described what the actual need was and how we should deploy it. So the, the guardrails we have are the ones that were included in the resolution. Though, uh, I will say, the, the two applicants, who are also the two folks that received the preliminary money, or the two organizations that received the preliminary money, they have gone beyond what we required of them in terms of accountability. And e- especially, uh, Faith United and Northwest are, uh, have long relationships with the city.
I, I have no doubt about that. But my question is, a sub-question, and when we first met, or we were introduced to this a couple of weeks ago, I was under the understanding that this food, this amount of money was going to be given for the residents of Superior. Are we, I, these two associations, I assume they give money to people who comes in the door, and so I don't know that we have to, we're gonna stick. Wasn't that our under- my understanding? Did we talk about that?
Uh, we did talk about that at the council, uh, and that we, as a council, were unlikely to award a grant to an organization outside of Superior. Now, it dependi- uh, i- if we wanna make sure that no food goes to people outside the city, these grants do not guarantee that. Uh, anybody can show up to the Faith United Food Shelf, uh, a- and to the many other food shelves that will be supplied by these grants, although both of these organizations are based in Superior.
I, I know they won't guarantee it. I'm not looking for a hundred percent guarantee, but I think we should have some understanding that the, the bulk of the, the money and the food that's bought by the city of Superior should go to the residents in the city of Superior.
I, I agree with that, and I do believe that, uh, the bulk of these resources will be used primarily within the city limits.
We have Millie right here. Would that be your understanding, Millie?
Do, do you mind answering a few questions?
Turn this on.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, Ms. Rounds.
I'm Millie Roundsville, I'm the Director of Northwest Community Services. I can speak specifically to my request. So the pantries that we worked with before, that's proposed in this application as well, is Casden Solid Rock, two shelters, obviously, that's for their meals, for their guests residing in Superior. The two Head Start Centers, so both, obviously, families in the city of Superior, children attending those Head Start Centers. Both of those created food pantries that we're supporting. HDC Project Reach Out, so that's the facility in Superior where the Superior youth are attending. And for our senior stock boxes, we have a waiting list. We lost slots, USDA funding, not related to SNAP, another budget casualty. So we do have residents. We have a waiting list. They live in Superior, this is their address, so we do collect that information. So I, I can't speak for Faith, obviously, but I can speak for our organization, that that was our understanding, is that these were specific for residents of the city of Superior.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Roundsville? Okay, then I will move into the actual recommendations. Uh, I'll ask the clerk to read them in order. Uh, these are novel grant op- applications, so, uh, if there's a motion to approve, you're free to amend them, to deny them, to postpone them. All motions are in order.
Nine point one point one is to approve a Food and Security Program Grant to Northwest Wisconsin Community Services Agency Incorporated in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
The motion is by Counselor Fantasy, second by Counselor Grasky. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Nine point one point two is to approve a Food and Security Program Grant to Faith United Methodist Church in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars.
The motion is by Counselor Johnson, second by Counselor Anderson. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Uh, counselors, I, the resolution only required me, if I remember right, to report at this meeting. That said, of course, any other grant applications that come in will obviously be on the agenda accompanied by a report.
New business, item ten point one, approve a resolution introduced by the Community Development Division to approve the Citizen Participation Plan, authorizing staff to submit plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Uh, we have, to my knowledge, no business by the public unless there are any special announcements from counselors. We have no further business and are adjourned. Have a happy Thanksgiving, counselors.